Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 11th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. I'll ask you all to rise to say, "Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen." That's okay. Now we'll do a roll call. Frank West here.
Pauline Maselli here.
Greg Bendel's here.
Kevin Kyra here.
Garrett Apama is here. Thank you. We just adjourned from executive session. I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for 9/11. And also, we've had some people in town that have passed away. Peter, I hope I pronounce it right, Hallmeister.
Holsmeister, yep.
He was Assistant Town Manager from 1974 to 1978, and he passed away on August 9th. Neil L. Buckley, Board of Appeals, from 1976 to 1992. He passed away on August 16th. William Fay Jr., Women Police Department, Special and Interim Police Office, from 1965 to 1973. He was also a teacher in Wilmington School Department from 1966 to 1970, principal from 1970 to 1985, and superintendent from 1989 to 1992. And he passed away on August 24th. And Dr. James A. Flucicelli, Board of Health, 1983 to 2016, and he passed away September 1st this year. We'll do the transmission of Treasury warrants, number 2407, 2407W, 2407T, 2407S, 2408, 2408W, 2408T, 2409, excuse me, 2409W, 2409T, 2409S, 2410, 2410W, 2410T. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? And there are no minutes to approve this evening. Now we go to our appointments. And our first appointment, it's at 7:00, is with Chief Joseph Desmond from the Wilmington Police Department. Have a seat up front. Lisa, you want to come up too?
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for having us. And good evening. We can't do any further in this until we give a tremendous shout out to the Wilmington Community Fund. They were the driving force behind this, and they also agreed to do the initial upfront costs for this system that we're about to explain. And I know some of the members are here right now. I think the President, Diane, is here. And I think Joan Seefoss is right next to her. They were the driving force behind this, so they really deserve a lot of credit for this. So what this system is, it's designed to track at-risk people who may wander off. As, you know, we get older, there's a lot of people out there who have dementia or Alzheimer's. It's increasing, and sometimes they tend to wander off. There's other at-risk people in the population, like, you know, with autism, younger children who may have some disabilities who wander off, and then also tend not to be able to navigate the world around them when they do wander off. And it's imperative that we find them as soon as we can. So what this system does in a very simplistic way is they wear a bracelet. If the person wanders off, we get notified. It gets activated, similar to like the old LoJack system in a car. We're able to then try and track down, you know, location of the person as quickly as we can. And I guess that's the simplest way to describe it. The big issue is, and obviously this isn't a police department thing, we don't run it. We will manage it. When the call comes in, we will actually, you know, we'll be the ones to respond with the system. However, determining the at-risk people who will wear the bracelet, that's where Terry and her people come in. And the School Department, we will, you know, rely on trying to figure out and prioritize who should wear the bracelets. Right now, we have eight, or is it nine? I think it's eight.
Eight bracelets.
We have eight bracelets. So this is a pilot program, so we're just starting. And some communities have, you know, has up to 20, 25 bracelets. Right now, we have eight, so it'll be important to determine, you know, who in the town is the most, you know, at risk for something like this, and try and encourage them to contact us and to wear it.
Cost to the individual? Is there any cost for the bracelet?
There's no cost at this time. The Community Fund has been generous to pick up the initial cost, which included those eight bracelets. So there won't be a cost to the caregivers.
The startup cost was about $5,000, you know, to get the program started. So at this point, yeah, there is no cost. I just don't know if in the future there'll be. But obviously, it would be our goal to make sure that it doesn't cost the families any money.
And just a couple of questions I have would be, you have someone in the community that has a wandering issue. The parents or next of kin, by letter from their doctor, could they go to you and just say, "This is what my child or my family member has, and can I get into this program?" Or is this going to be a recruiting? Are you planning a different type of recruiting program?
Well, I think the overall way to do it would be to assess the need in the town, now whether that's we learn of an individual that has this problem, and we recommend it, or whether they hear about it and come to us. I think both ways are fine. I think it's just a matter of, you know, where we have limited bracelets, really, you know, trying to, you know, sort of nail down who's at most at risk here.
And yeah, I'm assuming you're going to have some form of a screening committee to look at what their issues are and if they qualify for the program?
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to be a collaboration. We've worked very closely with Terry and the seniors, with the School Department. Becky Brown is here from the nurses, and as well as the Board of Health. So, you know, between the four of us, we're going to, or the four organizations, we're going to help identify. And if people are interested, they certainly can reach out to any one of the organizations, and we'll definitely have a discussion.
I think this is a very, very, very good program. We have people all the time that are wandering off, and then this massive search goes on to find these people. And by having a bracelet on them that they, you can tie into, is, I think, just an absolutely terrific new wave program.
And just one thing I want to mention about that, too. This doesn't replace any assets we would use. It would be in conjunction with, for instance, if we had call-out dogs, or, you know, help from other communities, or, you know, drones. Whatever assets are out there that we could use, we would utilize. It doesn't replace any of those. It's to work in conjunction with.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here and for this wonderful idea. I fully support this, as I'm sure all my colleagues do. And this is just a wonderful idea. What a great partnership by all these different groups. And specifically, I want to thank our friends at the Community Fund for their generosity. I think this is a wonderful idea and great use of technology, and just another way that our community can support its residents. And I thank all of you for this. This is wonderful. Thank you.
I echo Mr. Bendel's statements. Thank you all for working together. I mean, we hear these stories. There was just one I was reading this morning of an elderly gentleman. And, you know, be it an elderly person or a young child with a disability, you know, sometimes unfortunately they die a result. So if this could, you know, stop any of that happening, I mean, I think it's wonderful, and I commend you all, and thank you so much for doing that for our community.
Again, echo everyone's comments. One question that I have is that if it turns out, I guess a couple of things. One, when do we consider the pilot program over for, you know, having eight bracelets? And, you know, when would the thought be of potentially getting more?
So initially, hopefully with those eight, we can maybe a couple of months. And there is some other funding sources that we're looking into, in conversation with the Community Fund. They've expressed interest in helping for the, I know for autistic children, the Doug Flutie Foundation has grants for people that are eligible. So there's definitely funding sources out there. But once we kind of get a grasp of it, we've trained probably about 16 of our officers in this at the department to be able to use the device. So once we, you know, kind of figure out the need in the community, you know, we'll kind of, you know, hopefully after the first couple of months, we'll figure the program out, and we'll be able to expand it.
Okay. No, I think it's a great idea. And if there's other funding sources that you can potentially tap into, or if it ends up eventually being part of the police budget at some point, you know, I mean, if you help save one person from an unfortunate accident, it's a success. So I commend everyone.
Absolutely.
And as always, it's a great collaboration between departments. And we think that's, I think that's a great collaboration, both between the police, the seniors, and the, in this case, the Community Fund. It just shows Wilmington, once again, the generosity. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, I too echo my colleagues' comments and thank the Community Fund, the Elder Services, and the Police Department for putting this all together. It sounds like a program that's needed, for sure. And so if someone just understands if someone wanders off, the family calls the Elder Services or the Police Department, and then there's something that activates that bracelet? So is that how it works?
Right, exactly. So a call has to be made, and then it would be activated. And then at that point, we can try and determine where exactly it is by using, you know, the technology that we have, you know, to track it.
Right. Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair.
So it's basically like a GPS system?
No, that's the thing. It's not a GPS system. It's actually more old-school radio technology, which is a little more reliable. You don't have to worry about, you know, satellite towers, people in water. The radio technology is time-tested technology, so you don't have to worry about some of those high-tech. It seems, when you see the antenna, it looks like an old television antenna you'd put on your roof, but it's a little more efficient. But that's what the officers would be using if somebody were to go missing, some, yeah, and they were able to help locate them.
I would imagine it would give a family a little peace of mind, too. Knowing that your child using autism is outside playing, and we know how all kids are, number one, but children with autism wanders off, that there's someplace that, you know, the police are always there, we know that. But now, with a system like this, it's a system that can be activated very quickly, and the chances of locating the child or the adult, it seems like, would be at a more rapid pace. And I commend everyone.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a follow-up question? Are there any other surrounding communities that have been using it that you've spoken to just, you know, on their success with the program?
So one of the things that kind of was the impetus of getting us going was Chumpsford had a case early this year, and Joan had reached out about some AEDs, which we have plenty in the department. And then we started this discussion relative to Chumpsford's success with it.
Right.
I know Bill Ricker has the capabilities. Tewksbury has a similar device, which we could, both devices would work with each other. And it's one of those devices, certainly, that we hope not to have to use.
Right, absolutely.
But the peace of mind and the safety for the families that if someone did go missing, and, you know, we would hopefully be able to use this to find them quickly.
Thank you.
Through the chairs, to Mr. Pugh. I was going to ask that question. Can our device be used in another town since it's a radio-type of unit? And is our device a mobile unit? Or is it stationed right at the safety, the public safety building? Or does it go into the cruiser and it goes out?
No, so it is mobile. Yeah, so you put these antennas, you try to triangulate the location. So you would put this devices you'd put on the cruisers and kind of send them out in different directions from where you know, and this handheld, so, device. So it is mobile. I know the Middlesex sheriffs are able to deploy them, these other communities. And with the radio frequency, we could, Tewksbury, who has a different brand, we could speak with that. Once we know the frequency, we could program our system to it. So, yeah, it is transferable to other communities. I'm told the State Police air wing is, has a device onboard, so, yes. Just last week, Tewksbury had a, luckily, it was quickly, but they have that system, and they're activating it. And we would, at the same time, try to activate ours to help them out. But fortunately, she was found very quickly before we could even see if it worked or not. But just the fact that it was there and that we could have assisted Tewksbury is a great benefit.
With this program, when do you assume you're going to be activating it, even on a test basis?
Well, we had a meeting today, and we're, like I said, we're working with Terry and Becky Brown and the School Department to try to identify some individuals that candidates, they think, might be appropriate. But certainly, if anybody would like to reach out, you know, to one of us, we could certainly point them in the right direction. Sergeant Mike Wondell is kind of going to be the point person at the Police Department. But if they're unable to reach him, you know, Terry for the senior population, you know, certainly, we're looking to get this, we have them, and we're looking to roll it out as soon as possible.
Oh, that's terrific.
And as well as the officers haven't been trained on the device, so.
I want to thank you very much. Do you have anything else you'd like to?
No, we just have the opportunity. You know, we don't really know how big the risk is out there. We don't know what the need is. So this will be a good way to find out.
And again, just like to thank Joan for stepping forward and with the Community Fund and making this truly possible, because it's actually helping every aspect of the community, not only the elders, but also the younger generation. So it's such a wonderful thing, and it's great to have, once again, the school, the police, the elders, and the community and the whole work together. But I think Wilmington Community Fund really deserves a lot of credit.
And I just want to add, the scope of the project actually went up in price to closer to $9,000, and they didn't balk at all in that increase.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Looking forward to seeing the program activated. I'll be quite honest with you. I hope you never have to use it.
Same with us, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the great thing. And like I said, I think you're going to find that family members will be contacting you quite a bit once it gets out, just for peace of mind. You know, we all know, a child with autism, they're in the yard. But you blink and they're gone. So seniors, I wander off as it is. Thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing it in operation. And again, thank you to everyone for supporting those who have trouble supporting themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Robert G. Peterson Jr., Chairman of the Town Manager Screening Committee.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Through you, members of the board. Rob Peterson, Chairman of the Town Manager Screening Committee.
Thank you very much. And we also have Attorney Joe Fair. Will advise on any questions we have.
Come on up, Joe. You're going to end up there anyway, so.
Joe, Mike, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Apama, again, thank you, other members of the board, for allowing me to be here this evening on behalf of the Screening Committee. I was charged by the members of my committee back in front of this board this evening for a couple of reasons. The one that I consider to be most important and most pressing on the agenda, as voted at the last or the initial meeting of our committee on August 29th, would be our request that the board reconsider hiring of a consultant for the procurement of a town manager. I know this board had previously taken that up, but after a very lengthy and enlightening discussion at our first meeting on the 29th, it was the general consensus of the committee that it would be, we would be best served, the town of Wilmington would be best served, and our pool of applicants would be best filled, as improper English as that sounds, if it was, again, brought up for reconsideration, that a consultant be used to assist us with this matter.
Questions, gentlemen, ladies?
I'll start. That's okay. Thank you for being here. What made you come to that conclusion? Just briefly, I'm sure it was pretty in-depth conversation.
Yeah, so I think the largest issue or the biggest point of conversation at our meeting is we talked about the, and I wrote this in my letter, it's a very onerous task. And we have very capable individuals on this committee. We're fortunate enough to, one of the members of our committee is a former town manager himself, even having dabbled in the consulting area. But it was the general consensus of the committee that due to a myriad of issues, the least of which, the least of which would be like even an HR aspect, but just the pure breadth of a search that we think the town needs to undertake in order to attack, to attract the talent pool that we'll be looking for, that, again, will best afford the citizens of Wilmington, an opportunity to really get a cross-section out there. We think it would be best serviced by the hiring of a consultant. And when you're looking at, and this wasn't a discussion, but this is more just on top of my head, too. When I'm looking at, you know, $129 million budget, and what I'm looking at to what we'd be looking to budget out for a town manager, the numbers just make sense. It makes sense to me, and again, I'm speaking on my own behalf, not on the committee's behalf. If we're, if there's going to be an outlay, which could be significant, over a three-year contract, we're going to be talking, you know, this was on the far end of a scale, would be somewhere, again, I'm using loose figures.
Sure.
Say, a $700,000 contract. Again, loose figures.
Yep.
If you use the services of one of these consulting firms, we're looking at anywhere, again, this was another sliding scale with some research I did, anywhere from $5,000 upwards to $15,000, $20,000. Say if you fell right in the middle there at $10,000, that's 1.5% of the next town manager's contract. And it just, to me, it seems like it makes sense. It also makes sense with the background and knowledge that I was able to gather in that this is a plug-and-play thing. It's not like a, it's à la carte. You can put on RFP, RFQ to these companies, these folks, and then they'll put forward back to, you know, where they, the services they can provide. And what was most eye-opening to me after I left my initial meeting, doing some research on my own, is you can do, you can use that Google machine, and you can do a quick search, and it's all, I mean, all these towns have to make these records public, right? And it was brought up by a member. It was brought up by a comment at the meeting that that's something that can be done. So, you know, not doing so would kind of be reckless. So I did it. And the, some of the things you'll see back when you put those RFPs, RFQs, it's, I don't see our committee, there's nothing, we have very capable individuals, but using a consultant to gather that information, to do some of the background, I, again, I think we're going to get a very large return on what otherwise, in the scope of money, because unfortunately, everything comes down to money. I think we're going to get a large return coming back, and just seeing what they do and what they provide and what they can offer, and very basically, seeing the towns around us that have used these exact firms, a town of similar budget, say like a Reading. Reading used, Reading just went through this. They just chose theirs in 2022, $130 million budget. I think we would be, you know, very well-served again to do that. But again, the overall talk in our community is we're stepping into uncharted territories in Wilmington, because we haven't done this. And we're not folks who specialize in this type of endeavor.
No, that's fair. Thank you. You know, I have faith in this committee, and I'm speaking for myself. But if, you know, if you guys, as a committee, feel that is the way to go, you have my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Peterson. Thank you very much to you and to the members of your committees, those who are here and who are watching at home. Appreciate, and I totally agree with you, this is a very capable committee that we have formed, and I thank each and one of you for your volunteerism here. And I just want to say simply thank you for the recommendation. I appreciate the memo. We did have an opportunity to watch the video and the replay, and I appreciate all the thought that you guys put into it. So thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Peterson. When we had first had the discussion, whether to go with a Screening Committee or a consultant, and how we would take that approach, I believe in talking with Attorney Joe Fair as well. I believe the approach was to have a Screening Committee, you know, and how it was made up. And we have nine of the best on the Screening Committee, and let them do their job, advertise it, bring in the applications, review it, and then put them forward to the Board of Selectmen for hire. And we also discussed hiring a consultant, and let the consultant do it. Let them do the advertising, the bringing in of the applications and the vetting, and then bring in three or five finalists to the board. And so we thought that, I believe, we would go with the Screening Committee to avoid paying an expense of anywhere from, as you said, $5,000 to $20,000. So I don't know if it was a unanimous decision to go.
Six, it was six in favor, two against, one abstention, and one absent.
And I guess we could go with the consultant and let them do their job on our behalf. And then we could say, "You guys can have your nights off and enjoy the rest of the time." Because the way I see it, if we're going to hire a consultant to do the job that we hoped that the Screening Committee would do, then why, you know, and I'm not saying, please don't take this wrong, you know, why waste your time and effort in doing something that the Screening Committee, that the hired consultant's going to do for the Board of Selectmen? Right? So that's where I'm trying to reconcile how that all is going to work, with why keep a Screening Committee, you know, engaged if we're going to hire someone to do it?
I voted against a Screening Committee when this was brought up. But I have, since then, been thinking of it more and more and more, and I would reconsider my vote. The question I have is, even with a consultant, the committee could still... the committee could still do the actual interviews and proceed on that, that way, in working conjunction with the consultant, correct?
Yeah, that, I believe that's the general consensus of the committee, that we would prefer that we have the assistance of a, and again, it's an à la carte, as far as it's been determined, it's an à la carte, as to, you can specifically define, I mean, obviously, we have no authority to enter into contracts with them, but the Board of Selectmen, with hopefully input from the Screening Committee, could define the role of the consultant. In that way, we're not, you know, we can reduce or as best we can limit the financial exposure here as to how they will work in conjunction with the Screening Committee. And then, if we are, if this board sees fit to, again, allow the, or reconsider the request of the Screening Committee, it would be the hope that we would work, again, with that consultant when everyone was chosen, and they typically, again, from my research, they're the ones that come up with the timeline, the background, and they'll give you a kind of how things are gonna flow through. But we can narrowly tailor that to what we see fit as what's best for Wilmington.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. A question for you, Rob, is that what would you feel that, I guess, a couple of things would be is...
Well, one concern that I have is the timeline, okay? Because, you know, a town manager's gone in a month, or a month and a half. And if we're, you know, if you guys are gonna have a meeting, you know, we're gonna say, well, the Selectmen approved a Screening Committee or not, and now we're gonna, now, what do you think your timetable is, or when do you guys think in general that you could formulate a timetable that we could have a, an idea of when you, when you guys would come up, when your board would come up with your recommendation for, recommendations, plural, for candidates that we would, I guess, interview beyond your interview?
Mr. West, I could, I can kind of give you a general guess what that would be right now, but I think that would be ill-advised, and it would, it wouldn't have any merit behind it, because I think the discussion that we're having here this evening relative to whether or not we use that consulting firm, that is what's gonna dictate what our timeline looks like. So, for instance, I mean, I can just kind of give you, or read you a one-off of what a timeline looks like. So, in 2021, the Watertown prepared for a search just like this, and here's the projected timeline that was published. I'm not really sure who they went with for a, the services of a consultant, but this is what it, this is, I'm gonna read you in order, steps 1 to 13 of what they had. There was an introductory meeting review process, there was a consultation with town council, there was the supporting information gathered from the town, the position profile, recruitment brochure preparation, review profile with town council, advertisements and recruitments, resumes received for initial review, selection of semifinalists with Screening Committee, interviews and selection of finalists by Screening Committee, reference and background review, referral finalist, town council interviews and finalists, staff interaction with finalists, community forum, and that's, these are optional at the end. And then there's your Selectmen. So, all I can tell you is, I can't dictate why my committee is where we are now, but I can tell you that we've had one meeting.
Right.
I think that meeting went very well.
It did.
And I think when we meet again on Thursday, depending on what this board decides here this evening, and I hope it would be to go with the recommendation that we were able to put out that RFP, RFQ, once we get those, those responses in and we can move forward with it, it'll allow us to, me to answer that question, because, I mean, I would love to sit here and say, it's gonna be February 1st, February 1st, but I just, I don't think I'm equipped with enough information to answer that, and, or with any, without a smirk or a smile.
Right, no, no, I get it.
I couldn't do it. But I hope that, again, the discussion that led us here this evening is what's gonna lead us forward. And while I am completely understanding of the time-sensitive nature of this selection process, I also don't want to go so far, be driven by, you know, the time sensitivity to overlook what I think is the correct, and what the general consensus of the committee is, the correct procedure to get the absolute most qualified candidate in here.
Okay, and I guess, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Town Manager, where would we get budget, if you're looking for $10-ish thousand? Is there a budget?
Well, two things. First of all, I think there really needs to be a very distinct discussion going on about what the plan is for a temporary town manager, because that's the most, in my estimation, imminent issue. You know, after October 31st, I'm retired, and absent a decision by the board, there will not be a town manager. So, it seems to me that issue is very critical to establishing a game plan, whether it's, you know, sending some kind of a communication out to department heads to see if there's interest internally, or putting some kind of a notice, online notice in the MMA on their website. You know, that, that needs to be priority one. Certainly, the other equally important issue is the longer-term permanent town manager. With regard to the question about funding, we do have a line item, professional technical services, which we use for things like Verdantis, our environmental consultant, various consulting services that may come up, whether it's doing testing over at Silver Lake or other things. So, I would expect that there would be money available in that account if the board was inclined to hire consulting services. I think it's also very important to be very specific in terms of those services, as Mr. Peterson noted, there's a myriad of functions, and he went through the litany of steps that were in the Watertown action plan, if you will. So, everything from putting the notices out there to doing background work on candidates, to culling the candidates, all of that, you know, the town can, the board can opt to do some or all of that. And, but the question, you know, are you gonna have a consultant for coming up with a temporary town manager, and then a consultant for a permanent town manager? Or is it possible to do the temporary, you know, take those steps internally and then get a temporary onboard, and then focus the consultant's efforts on a permanent town manager? I think those are all really issues that need to be discussed sooner rather than later.
I think you took a vote.
Yeah, and I can speak to that. We did take a vote relative to the temporary town manager, and it was the vote of a vote to six to one. And I was actually the only one that voted against it, not because I wanted to choose a temporary town manager, I just don't think we should have qualified our vote in any way, shape, or form. But the vote that we took was that we would defer to the Select Board to choose the temporary town manager, and that we would further suggest that it be, consideration be given to a member, a current member of town government. And as stated in the meeting, the only reason I voted even against that was I just think we should have just all-out said, nope, it's, that's back on you guys, which is, was what the charge to our committee was. So, again, that wasn't because I disagreed with the, I thought our board should be choosing it. I do not. I just thought it should have came back with nothing, no strings attached.
Through the chair, and when that was brought up, Mr. Peterson, that was brought up for an opinion from the Screening Committee. Not that the Screening Committee would take that charge to hire a temporary or an acting. It was wanting to hear the opinion of the nine individuals who we feel are most qualified as to their feeling on it. So, there was nothing, the hiring of a, an acting and temporary, the hiring of a permanent is the purview of these five individuals, as you know. And it was not given to the Screening Committee to do that hiring. It was given to the Screening Committee to give an opinion of that.
Yep, oh, yep, I completely agree.
Okay.
Mr. Fair, you've seen these, Attorney Fair, you've seen these procedures going through. And do you feel the town would be more suited to bring in a consultant also? I'm putting you on the spot.
No, no, so, Mr. Chairman, so as I said at the first meeting that I was asked to attend, you know, different towns have different approaches to these situations, and it really does vary. You know, from a legal standpoint, which is primarily what my role is, there's really no limits in terms of how you want to structure this, other than things like the open meeting law and such. So, outside of that, it really is the purview of the board. I think ultimately, everybody's trying to get to the same endpoint, which is find the best town manager that you can. It's sounding like the board has a tough decision to make, but your Screening Committee is looking for some assistance. And as I noted at that first meeting, you know, again, these recruiters, these consulting agencies that are out there that do this kind of work, as, as the Chair of the Committee indicated, you know, it is pretty much a, you know, pick whichever piece of their services you want to utilize. So, the cost could be significant, and you could utilize them in a extended capacity to handle everything from soup to nuts. If your committee is just looking for a little guidance on some of the, I guess, things that, that the consultant who works in this space all the time can sort of help them learn what they don't know. Because right now, they don't know what they don't know. You know, that would be presumably on the lower end of costs. It's, their request doesn't seem unreasonable to me, but ultimately, it's a matter of whether the board wishes to take back the entirety of the process with a consultant guiding you all, or to utilize more of a hybrid system than the one you originally created. So, I fully realize I didn't directly answer your question, because ultimately, it's your choice. And I think whether it's what Mr. Kyra indicated, or what the Chair has indicated, or something in between, they're all reasonable choices. I think everybody's trying to get to the same space, so I don't think you can go wrong with any one. It's just a matter of deciding which direction this board wants to go in.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Rob, Mr. Peterson, I'm gonna call you, Robbie. There was a, there's a, there's a correspondence in this packet, and I don't know if it was given to you, I would hope that it was, from Buzz Stupczynski. Did you receive it?
I received it this morning, correct?
Okay.
Yep.
His comments and the option of coming to the next meeting or to a meeting to discuss it.
And I think, again, I don't, this, this might be a very appropriate question for town council. I don't know how that works relative to a person who is in the professional space coming to a meeting when there's no RFP, RFQ put out there, and is that seen as us using that person without going through the procurement channels? I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Through the chair, I don't know if you've seen this letter or not.
Yep.
Mr. Fair.
I'm not sure I've seen the actual letter, but I'm aware of, at least, the overchair.
Mr. Stupczynski and Mr. Mercer, both in the field, as Mr. Peterson said, are offering their assistance pro bono for the time period to hiring a person. "It's great that many communities have the expertise in handling the process themselves." Is one of the lines that I grabbed out of here. And then, it said that they would look to come to a meeting, and they would be doing all of this pro bono. So, I didn't, I didn't know if this was something that, I'm...
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could just note the, I don't, I think there needs to be some care in terms of what, as I understand it, is, is being offered there. I think the verbiage indicates that they, whether it was Buzz or Bob, would be prepared to come to the Screening Committee to outline what they have seen through their experience is a successful or effective recruitment. I don't believe that necessarily means that they're gonna place the notice on the website or do the specific concrete functions of a recruiter. I think, I think it's, as I understand it, suggesting that they'll explain what they've seen, the steps that they've seen other communities take. But again, I, that's just my read on that. I do think, though, that, you know, there needs to be a decision, I would suggest, by the Select Board as to whether you want to engage the services of a recruiter, because it, in my estimation, would be ill-advised to have Buzz or Bob come in and provide that service if you're going to have, then, seek the services of a firm. I know that they are involved with a firm that does this kind of work, so I guess it, I think it, if the board is going to go with consulting services, then I think the board should take that route and, you know, can simply respond to, or I can respond on the board's behalf, indicating that, you know, the offer is appreciated and that there'll be a request for quotes being offered, or something to that effect. But I think to do both could be problematic, if you're having them come in and provide advice, and then, then going through a request for services process.
Well, I can understand what you're saying, Mr. Hull, but I also look at it that by having them come in, they could explain the most important procedures that they would have to delegate to, you know, an outside firm, or how they would actually structure, what the committee is going to be working on, and what the council would be working on.
Mr. De Palma, if I may, oh, sorry, I just wanted to say that I think we should leave this decision up to the committee on whether they want to use this person or not. I don't think that should be our decision. And I also wanted to add that I, too, initially voted down using a consultant. I just feel that if the committee feels that that's gonna help them get to an endpoint, and I would obviously ask that they use it for the, you know, getting the resumes, the things that they need, and not a full-on, you know, contracted service, because like, to Mr. Kyra's point, what's the point of having a committee if they're gonna do all the work? It's my interpretation, you know, from the meeting and from Mr. Peterson, that they would kind of do, as you put it, an à la carte, you know, services selection.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanted to make two quick points. I guess, I don't disagree with anything that was said relative to the offer that came via email. I guess, to my first point, my first question is, and again, this is not my area of legal expertise, so I'll leave it to town council, but I don't know if you can do both. I don't know if we can have someone come in without putting an RFP. I think that's kind of shaky, it might, it's a little...
I agree with that.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, it's, we certainly would not recommend that individuals that may be volunteering their services, at least at the outset, if, I mean, if they're gonna take themselves out of the running, applying for the job, then, then sure. If they're gonna disqualify themselves and not put in a, any kind of a response to the RFP, then that's perhaps a different situation. I'm not sure that that's what they're necessarily offering, so my concern would be there's somebody who is later going to apply that's getting an advanced meeting with the committee, and then you're gonna have this selection process where they're actually one of the applicants. That could be problematic.
It will be, well, as Mr. Hull said, he could be contacting these gentlemen and advising them upfront that we are gonna go with one, and that we'd prefer not to have you come in if you're gonna be a candidate for the position.
Through the chair, yeah, and I don't actually read it that way, of course. I mean, I read it as if it says that we have assembled together experienced individuals as a Screening Committee, and it seems as if he's understanding that is the Screening Committee's gonna... the screening committee is going to be doing the work and did they want to come in and provide some advice. But of course, if they're going to, uh, be part of the RFP or RFQ, then absolutely not. You don't want them there. But I don't think, I think their understanding, as I read this, and I, is that, you know, the screening committee as it presently exists is going to be doing that, and they wanted to offer, um, their assistance because of their, you know, familiarity with, with the town of Wilmington, and I think Buzz was a town manager here, and so, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Okay, I, I, I also, I, I, I agree with that as well, it's, it's a, it's a really weird, because it's, that's just, we, we're at point A, uh, there is a point B, uh, and the committee sees us at a point C, so I think that B area in the middle with what we've asked of the board will fill in a lot of that gap. So I, I, I do agree with Ms. Kyra. I think what they're suggesting is operating under what we, what, what technically we currently have, uh, but I think that if we agree, if, if it is the agreement of this board to, uh, put out RFP, RFQ, I think it changes what, I think it, not the meaning of that email, but just what we can kind of do with it.
Yes.
Yeah, if, through, if the board votes the consultant, then you would assume that these individuals would be part of that process.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. West.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, I think what, what Lou was saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, is that if you have, if you get, you know, you, you kind, well, let me just back up, you, you kind of outlined the steps. So you're kind of somewhat aware of the steps. And you're gonna, more than likely, you know, depending on what this board says, is that we're gonna potentially give you the, the authority to hire a consultant, or I guess we're gonna hire the consultant, Jeff?
No, we hire.
Well, it would be the board.
We would hire, through their rec, you know, so how would, I guess, let me back up. What is the process if we give them the autho, if we allow the authority for a consultant? What, what are the steps?
Contracts, and correct me if I'm wrong, council, but, uh, typically contracts are signed by the town manager, so in this case, um, whether it would be the board or myself, as I'm, as I'm still here, uh, there would be a, because the expectation here is this work is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 10,000 to 20,000, uh, under chapter 30B, um, there is a need to solicit three quotes, uh, so there would have to be, uh, a request sent out to at least three firms, um, could be more, but at least three. You don't need to receive responses, or we don't need to receive responses from all three firms, but then ultimately, when the responses come in, there would have to be, you know, a review of the prices and, um, in that instance, uh, the, the, um, firm that comes in with the lowest price, it's able to meet the requirements of that, uh, scope, uh, would then be awarded the, the work. And again, whether I sign the contract, um, or whether the board signs a contract, typically I would sign them, but maybe in this instance, that differs, I, I don't know.
Well, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I think there, there's sort of also a threshold issue that the board would have to address first, which is, what is the scope of the work that you're asking the consultant to do? Because that's obviously going to impact the pricing, um, you know, in, to some extent, depending on what the committee is looking for the, the consultant to do. Um, you know, i- if it's to come to a meeting, provide guidance, lay out the process, here are the steps you need to take, here are the places that, you know, we would typically advertise, et cetera, and then the committee does the legwork from there, that's one version of that. Um, alternatively, it could be that they have that kind of a presentation and the consultant is doing a lot of that legwork, or there's some variation in between. So, uh, the point of all that is it's going to impact really what you're even asking when you're putting out there, when you're looking for your quotes, what you're actually asking them to respond to, what is that scope of work? Once you do that, I mean, I think, because this is a little bit of a, um, of an interesting situation, because it's a, your, your procurement officer typically, as the manager says, is the town manager, but you're essentially procuring services for a subcommittee that's set up, you know, a screening committee that's set up by the board. So obviously, the board would be involved in the process. I think at the end of the day, if everybody's on the same page, it won't matter who signs it. Um, you know, legally speaking, it'll just be based off what, what the charter requires. But I think that's the threshold question that needs to be determined. What is, if you're going to go down this road, what is the committee looking for the consultant to do, or how much or how little? And how much or how little does the board want to authorize?
Well, that would be, that could be addressed tomorrow night's meeting, Thursday. Thursday night, excuse me, Thursday night's meeting. Uh, and then if we have to, we can either, we present it back to the, you present it back to the board, uh, and this is what we want to do, uh, or, uh, I don't know how we would be able to, to do it, to move it along as, you know, fast as we, we could.
First, we have to prove it.
I, I just wanted to continue real quick, is that humble opinion on the letter, again, I think it's ultimately your board's say, but I, if it was me, I'd say, thank you very much, but no thank you. And because if, if we're going to look for a consultant, or, you know, we look for a consultant, this kind of, to me, this kind of skews the processes. I agree with a couple of people that said, this is more of, hey, let me walk in and give you all my, you know, give you my best foot forward, and oh, by the way, I'm looking for, at the end of the day, I'm looking for the job.
Can I just, oh, sorry.
I could just speak to that, because I, I did have a conversation with Buzz. He called me, I think it was last week, or at some point here after the letter, um, w- was, the email was sent, and, you know, we had a good conversation, and, um, my, uh, my understanding was, and I think it's reflected in, in the letter here, that he, he indicated that it appeared that at the, at that time, the board was not, uh, inclined to pursue a, a consulting services, so, uh, from what I gathered from that letter and, and the conversation we had, he indicated, you know, I, I, we're just looking to offer you some, or the committee, some free advice.
Yeah.
And, and that was the extent of it. I think if, if, um, and I don't want to certainly speak for him, but my, my sense was, if the board was, uh, had indicated earlier on that there was a desire to engage in consulting services, and I suspect the, the firm that he works for may have submitted a proposal, but, you know, I, I just want to be very clear, from my sense, you know, this was not intended to try to get your foot in the door for the purposes of, you know, making, um, money. It was just a, you know, a, a generous offer. If the board isn't going to hire consulting services, and Buzz certainly was familiar with the town, he was the assistant town manager, and then the town manager, uh, Bob Mercer was the town manager, and Bill Ricker in Burlington a couple of times, so they both are familiar with, generally, certainly Buzz more than Bob, but familiar with the town to some measure, so it was just an offer, uh, on their part to, again, outline what they have seen in their experience as the steps that a community follows in terms of getting a successful recruitment process. So, um, you know, again, if the board is looking to engage consulting services, then it would seem to me the appropriate thing to do would be to convey, you know, we appreciate your, uh, interest, uh, but it, you know, the board has decided to engage consulting services, and, you know, you may, perhaps, if you're interested, uh, you know, there'd be a request for, um, or a request for quotes or whatever coming out shortly or whatever, um, if, if that's the, the course. If not, if the board is not inclined to engage consulting services, then there may be a desire to take them up on their offer. But, but again, I think, you know, there's two distinct pieces that, that have to, that everybody has to be mindful of. One is the immediate issue of having someone serve in this role on November 1st, um, and, you know, and then obviously, what happens beyond that. Um, and, and so again, the question is, is the intent to hire consulting services for the temporary town manager?
I think right now, we're just...
And then go through another process for the town manager?
I think right now, Mr. Hull, we're, we're just addressing, uh, the town manager's position, not a temporary town manager's, uh, I think that's why the board is here.
Mr. Chair, and I think it will, it will all shake out when the vote is taken. So if the vote is taken and it's, uh, in favor of getting a consultant, then you don't want them to come in on Thursday.
Right.
Correct.
If they, if the vote is taken that we want to stay the course and have the screening committee, then you may want to invite them in.
Yeah.
So let's, let's wait until we get to the board to consider and take that vote.
Thank you.
And as for the scope of the work, i- if it is decided that the, um, selectmen are going with a consultant, I would imagine that the screening committee, if it stays, uh, together, if they decide to, and not dissolve because we're hiring a consultant, uh, would want to take part in the scope of the work, since, uh, a portion of that would come back to you. So I would think on Thursday, you would take that up.
Yeah.
I won't tell you what they're doing on your agenda, but you would take that up as part of your agenda, uh, so that we could put out the RFP.
And, and can I just, uh, yeah, two things, um, yes to all. Uh, so I, I agree with Mr. Kyra's, um, kind of, what the, what, what the letter is, is what it is today, and, and to Mr. West's point, that letter means something. If you guys vote in favor of, uh, having a consultant, that letter means something completely different, and then we, we can abide by that. So, in, we would politely have to advise the individual, but as it was sent, I agree with what Mr. Hull said, that he sent that under the guise that we were not having one. So I, I, I don't see any, there was, uh, you know, there was no nefarious act there. I think he just sent it because he thought we were going down here, and like Mr. Hull said, he was a, a former town manager, so I, again, I think it was sent with all, all good intentions, that's fine. And as far as the RFP, RFQ, if this board does vote tonight in favor of that, uh, I would agree with Mr. Kyra that we would have to take up what the scope of that is, and just off the cuff, what, what I would say, what the scope of that would be is, you put it out there, uh, too, and again, we, we'll come back with a more detailed, you know, scope, or what we see it being, uh, but we, we put it out there, and then when it comes back, it's my understanding that they can put in there, they can build into their, um, to their responses, what you can pick and choose from, they make things optional, uh, but there are such things that would be attractive to a screening committee, and then, to, to kind of bring this all full circle, I, I guess what I would say, what, and again, this is me speaking, not the committee, I, I think the biggest plus, or the biggest value add of hiring a consultant, is we're showing all the individuals in the Commonwealth and outside who might be looking for a position like this, that we're giving our community, our town, we provide you with all the tools you need to succeed. This is a tool that our subcommittee, by a vote of six, two, one, one, uh, has deemed important enough, and, and I would go out to say on my own, that it, it is a tool that when we, if we use it and use it correctly in, in that à la carte scenario, we're going to be presenting to any and other town managers, assistant town managers, finance directors, DPW directors all over the Commonwealth and outside, that Wilmington is a place that's going to afford you all the tools you need to succeed, and we're going to do it, and, and we're going to make the decisions based on what is best for our town and what, what, what our boards and our committees and our individuals need to get the most qualified individuals through the door.
Thank you. Chairman, could I kindly request that you consider taking agenda item number seven out of order at this time?
I was going to ask if there was any other comments first, and then bring that forward.
Thank you.
Are there any, is there anyone here who wants to speak on this matter? I noticed there's some subcommittee members here, and, Mr. McCoy?
Yeah.
You want to?
Believe me, I didn't. Oh, no. Sit right there. That's all right. Citizen McCoy, I can't come over here. No, believe me, I had no intentions of speaking on this matter this evening. I've got no skin in this game. I'm here because I wanted to talk about the, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act, which I will do as a public comment, and I'm just listening to the board going back and forth, and it seems like you have put a large task on this, on this search committee, number one, for them to do their interviews, come up with some candidates for town manager, and then it's the ultimate decision of this board to make that decision. It also sounds like you give them another tough task, letting them come up with the assistant, have them come up with the, you know, uh, acting town manager or interim town manager, so it seems like you put a large task on this, uh, subcommittee. Now, I'm hearing them coming back to you, basically, it's a lot of work, and they're putting it back to you folks, you know, what, what we need to do here, we need to hire a consultant. And I just want to say a couple of quick comments. Like I said, I got no skin in this game, I had no intention to talking to anybody about this, but, I know, I served on that board for a few years, and I remember when we went through the process of hiring town council, we spent all summer interviewing town council. We did it as a board. We didn't have a subcommittee to do that. We took the time to do it, and for the love of me, I don't understand why, you are the voting authority, you are under the town charter, appoint the town manager, that's your job, the town council, that's your job, and I just don't, you know, and I said, hey, I get no, I'm a citizen, it doesn't matter to me, but I don't understand why, and I say it respectfully, why aren't you folks conduct, conducting all the interviews yourself? And if it has to be every night or during the summer, or whenever, or this winter, because I know you want to appoint, you know, a town manager, I just, you know, I got something else I like to say, I just don't know why, and I say, respectfully, I know we all got jobs and we're busy, but when you take this position, I figured you would, do the interviews. I'm just wondering, how can we folks not do all the interviews?
Well, one, we will be doing interviews when, uh, the, uh, subcommittee, and once the subcommittee goes through everything, does their, all their, their research and everything, they're going to present to the board three to five names of individuals that we will be discussing and we will interview, uh, but...
I understand that, I did say that, I think, about three, four minutes ago, that it's your ultimate decision, so I get that, you want that, you know, and I guess you asked them to come up with the, you know, acting town manager or interim town manager. I'll tell you, I own, and I'm going to be talking about, I owned a restaurant for 31 years, and I found it very valuable to promote with them. It paid in dividends, and I don't know, for the love of me, you got an assistant town manager, you know, I soon, you know, Jeff made that appointment, I don't know why you just don't have the acting, the assistant town manager be the interim town manager as you're going through this process, when Mr. Hull goes. That's all, I just say it because we've done that before, you know, always promoted the assistant town manager, you know, and like I said, I got no skin in this game, folks, you know, this is what you folks are going to do, and I respect what you want to do, but I just thought I'd just put that out there, I just...
Thank you, Mr. McCoy, I appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things, a couple of quick things. Uh, Mr. Peterson, as far as this letter goes, if you're not going to use a consultant, I mean, I, I'm wondering if, if, if you should go back to your board and say, look, we've got somebody that is, is town manager said, is willing to assist for, for free. So might not be a bad start if, if that's the case, and I, I kind of misinterpreted the, the scope of the letter. I thought it was more of a, a buy-in, but if it, if it's not a buy-in, you know, you might want, might be best served here. The other thing I do want to make reference to is, is that a lot of the tools that you've got, that you need rather, have been presented, you know, created, a lot of them by our assistant town manager, as far as, you know, in draft form, but at least it gives you a tool to work with. And I think you've been presented, hopefully, most, if not all, of that material, as well as any other material that, that we can certainly provide.
Thank you.
Can I just add one quick thing? We are all volunteers here, as are the committee, um, and as Mr. McCoy mentioned, you know, we all have jobs and other things. This is a huge undertaking, and we realize the scope of that, and we will be deciding who the new town manager of this town will be, but we need this committee to help. They can't spend every night, we can't spend any night, but we are going to work, you know, with them. So we've asked these volunteers to, to come forward, help us out, and we will ultimately, we're going to be very involved in the process. So it isn't a matter of what we're not doing, it's what we are doing to make this happen and make sure it's done correctly. So I, I take a little bit of offense saying that we're not, you know, interviewing and why aren't we hiring, and we didn't task them with, with hiring the assistant or the interim, we asked them to weigh in on it. That was, maybe I'm using the wrong words, but we didn't task them with actually hiring or appointing. We asked them to come back to us with their opinion on, could they take that on, do they want to do that or not, and they've chosen not to, and we will, we will handle that.
I understand what you're saying, but being a member on the board of selectmen, I want to interview everybody, that's why you're elected, that's your job.
Have you, did you, did you interview for a brand-new town manager? Have you been, you were in a position to interview a town manager. You were never, and this is a very unique situation in hiring a town manager.
I didn't hire a town manager.
No, you didn't, you promoted, you did, you, you hired Jeff, you didn't go out and... It's different, Mr. McCoy, we are going outside or perhaps inside, but it's a, it's a different scope, it's a much larger scope. scope, it's a much larger scope. You didn't need a committee because you didn't entertain anybody else except Mr. Hull, because he was the right candidate for it.
Well, there was, I just want, just to correct you, that there was individuals that wanted to do a nationwide search and spend $60,000 back then, and I'm just going to say, I said, I don't think we need to spend $60,000, we've got the town manager right there.
And that's great.
But there was talk about doing that, I'm just...
But it was talk, you didn't do, is what I'm saying. And I'm not disputing what you did back then, but I'm saying, this is something that Wilmington has not seen. So we're trying to do things the right way, and we get criticized no matter what we do, and we're going to continue to get criticized no matter what we do, but we're trying, each and every one of us, and I will speak for my colleagues, we are trying to do what is best for Wilmington, and putting our best foot forward to make sure that we do this correctly. None of us sitting here want to get the wrong person in seat, be it internally, externally, we're just trying to do the right thing here. And all's I've seen is negativity, and I'm not saying this from you, Mr. McCoy, I'm just saying as a whole. We are bringing in the committee, not to do work for us, but to help us do our work, because it's a huge undertaking, and we want other people involved so we can do this the right way. Because I'll tell you right now, if we do it as five people, and we hire someone, it's going to be a circus. And that's not the reason we're doing it, I'm just giving you my personal opinion on that. But it's all with thoughtful intent on why we have this committee made up of nine very capable people to help guide us. But we will ultimately make that decision and interview the people. But we are volunteers as well, and we take it very seriously. I personally don't have time to commit every single night, five days a week, to anything, solely one thing. I have a family, I have a very demanding job, I have a small business. I came into this eyes wide open, no one was going to take up a lot of my time, and it does. People think it's once a week, a meeting, it's not, it's every day, on some level, as you very well know, okay? I can't do that. I am one person, I have a family, these guys are all in the same situation. So it's an impossible task to expect a committee of five to meet throughout the summer, throughout the winter, multiple times a week, to do anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney for...
Mr. Chairman, I did want to just, just a point of clarification, that maybe members of the public aren't aware, but because of the open meeting law, if this board were to do this whole process by itself, you would have to do everything in open session. And when you do everything in open session, when you're looking for a new town manager, that basically now means that every one of your applicants is going to have their names out there publicly, which may then impact the number of people that actually apply for the position. So for a situation like this, our recommendation would be, anyway, that you have a subcommittee, however that's comprised, because under the open meeting law, you have the ability to do the initial vetting in executive session, and so you're not exposing anybody's names publicly, you're not impacting the number of people that might be applying, and their names become public at the end, when they're named finalists, and at that point, you know, of course, they would be publicly interviewed by this board. So it's an important distinction between, you know, this type of a situation, as to why the board would actually adopt, and we would recommend you actually have a screening committee for that reason.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Mr. Shampoo?
I'll be incredibly brief, which I know is unusual for me. Mike Shampoo, Tanglory Way, I'm on the screening committee, and I don't want to repeat Mr. Peterson's well-presented argument, but I think I was probably one of the loudest arguers at our committee meeting for, in favor of engaging the assistance of a professional executive search firm, for a number of reasons. It's access to talent pool, as Mr. Peterson said, they are in the trenches doing this all day, every day, eight, nine, whatever hours a day, this is what they do. I'm in marketing, Rob's a lawyer, John's a lawyer, the people in our committee are all in other professions, doing other things, eight, nine, 10 hours a day. And we do not have specific expertise in executive search activities. Now, we're intelligent people, and we can look at a boilerplate or a sequence of steps that other towns have taken, and try to follow those same steps, but as Town Council just mentioned, we also have the same open meeting restrictions upon us as a committee as you do. And that kind of, that holds us back from our ability to act as quickly as we ultimately would like to, engaging with, in reviewing resumes, in connecting or collaborating with each other in reviewing resumes. So, you know, there's logistics associated with it from that perspective, that just the simple logistical tasks of where to advertise, what media to use to advertise, how broadly to advertise. There are certainly media here in the state, the Beacon and other places, but also, do we want to go more broadly in regional advertising? We don't necessarily have that expertise and that knowledge where those places are to advertise. These executive search firms, that's what they do for a living. Additionally, credibility, we are looking for the cream of the crop. We want to hire the best town manager that is possible for this community. Someone, I think Ms. Misselli said, you want to do what's right for the town. Everyone here in this room wants to make sure that this task is done at the highest possible level, and that we hire the best person for the town. That's why we're all doing this. And so, for whatever it's worth, and I appreciate, Mr. Kyra, that I know you weren't at all insinuating this, but my argument is not at all to get out of doing any work. If an executive search firm can do some level of these activities that I'm talking about, and elevate our credibility among the applicant pool, then that's sufficient, then we can kind of handle the interview questions, we can do all the rest of that, kind of, the screening work that you've asked us to do. But I do believe to my core that we need that level of expertise to kind of go to market on our behalf, and gather in, and illustrate to the applicant pool that we're taking this very, very seriously, so much so, that we are engaging the professional expertise of one of these firms. I think that's everything I had to say, and I appreciate your taking a long time to deliberate over this. I hope that you vote in favor of allowing the committee to engage with and find a firm that fits our needs. I would say that as a member of the firm, we would use as little of their services as are needed. I'm not looking for, you know, a blank check here. So that would be one thing that I would argue, ultimately, if we do get there. If you don't approve us to be able to do that, then I would certainly, I would argue to the chairman and to the rest of the committee, that we would invite in Mr. Stapczynski and those folks, and avail ourselves of whatever free services they're willing to give us. But we wouldn't do that if you vote in favor tonight. I think that's all I have, but thank you very much for this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shampoo.
Mr. Chair, just let me say this, just because I'll be voting no, Mr. Shampoo and Mr. Peterson, because I think we have nine very talented individuals that can do this job, doesn't mean that I don't take it seriously, just so you... I don't want the community to take that from your comments, that I'm taking it lightly.
Thank you. And I'd just like to make one comment on that, Mr. Kyra. We may argue, and we may be disagreeing with each other pertaining to this, but always remember that we do have the town's best interest. Now, I'd like to take, out of order, Communications, Number Seven, Board to Consider.
Can we also take Board Number Eight while he's here?
Well, they've received that, it's in their packet.
Well, they did.
It's, the letter from Mr. Stapczynski?
No, this is about the...
Evaluation for...
Evaluation for the town manager.
I think we are voting on giving it to them tonight.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We're not going to hand it to them, he doesn't need to be here for it, though.
Let's get Seven out of the way first, and then we'll address... Board to Consider, Number Seven, authorizing the procurement of a recruiting consultant for the town manager's search. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second for discussion.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as you all are well aware, back in July, you know, I voted in favor of hiring a consultant firm to assist us, and at the time, I think I recall kind of comparing it to recent superintendent searches, where MASC had kind of assisted in the search part, and then the screening committee, to one of which I was a member of, went through and then vetted those applications that came in, and interviewed, and then made a recommendation to the school committee, who ultimately did further interviews, and then hired. I think we can arrive at a hybrid situation, and that's my hope, so I will again be voting in favor of this, as I did in July.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just question for clarification? So this Number Seven is, would be consulting services for the permanent town manager, as opposed to...
Correct.
The temporary town manager.
Yes, this is the, Seven is for the permanent town manager. Okay, do I have a vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? Board to One?
Might I suggest, Mr. Chair, that Mr. Stapczynski be notified that...
Yes.
He's, you know, he's in the running for this position, once the RFP comes up.
Again, Mr. Chair, just to, for clarification, I think as Attorney Fair noted, there needs to be some direction as to what is going to be in that scope of services.
That is going to have to be addressed by the committee, the subcommittee, and then they will present what they'd like to see, and will move forward from there. If they're doing the work, they should have the right to pick and choose what they think is best. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you very much. Attorney Fair, thank you.
Thank you, committee members.
Question.
Now, we're on to Communications.
Yes, so under Communications, the first item was a memo from me to the board, just noting some issues for the board to consider, in part related to the temporary town manager position and the screening committee in general, but some of the points, including whether internal candidates would first, whether the intent is to first seek internal candidates, or go outside and seek outside candidates simultaneously, a number of points here just suggesting that the board consider. Next, under Communications, it was already referenced, the communication from Buzz Stapczynski, offering to provide some pro bono advice.
Mr. Hull, you will be notifying them that...
Yes.
A change of plans. Thank you.
Next, under Communications, is a memo from me to the board with regard to a request to amend the memorandum of agreement on the Board of Appeals' order of conditions. This related to the Princeton Properties decision that the Board of Appeals made. Initially, when the Princeton property filed for their so-called Friendly 40B, they were looking to go through financing through what was then the Executive Office of Community, Housing and Community Development, and subsequently, they've expressed interest in pursuing some financing through mass housing, and as a consequence, that has, would result in the change of the percentages of affordable units. It does not, however, change the fact that the 108 units would be still counted towards the town's SHI, and that was noted in this memo. Next is a communication from me to Jeffrey Brown, who's the attorney representing Princeton Property, noting that with respect to the board's memorandum of agreement, given that the change that they were seeking was not substantial, it was not changing the impact on the number of affordable units to be counted, the request was granted. And I would note, just as an aside, a similar request was made by Princeton of the Board of Appeals to modify their comprehensive permit, which was also granted. Next is a memo from Elizabeth Florenson, the town clerk, status on the considerations to change the location of voting precincts for residents in precincts three and four. This is just a status, noting that we've had some discussions with the school superintendent and the assistant superintendent of admin and finance, and we will hopefully wrap those discussions up, but the recommendation we anticipate is going to be to use the high school. She also notes she had a representative from the Secretary of the Commonwealth come out and look at a couple of other locations which were requested, one being the July 4th building, the other being the senior center. And there were, in the case of the July 4th building, there were some access issues that the town would need to deal with, but in both cases, I think there was concern about, there is concern about parking at those locations, but there will be more to follow. I would just note, while there was an expectation that the town clerk would be meeting with the school committee to provide them with an update, that has changed, and that will not be taking place on Wednesday. We have a memo from Jamie McGall, the Public Works Director, on a update with regard to the traffic lights at the Public Safety Building, and he notes that the lights are, the foundation work will be beginning shortly here, either this week, within the next couple of weeks. Unfortunately, the fabrication of the signal mast arms is, that's going to take some time, there's some manufacturing delays, the expectation is that the mast arms will be in in December of this year, and then the work would begin to install those. I have a letter from Dan Murphy, who commented on the composition of the screening committee, and he notes that the, in his opinion, the committee does not reflect the breadth of the community, and he encourages the board to consider modifying the committee to be more representative of the community. We have a communication letter from Attorney Rich, this is with regard to the Wildwood School oil spill, this first communication is directed to North Atlantic Services. You'll recall that they were the delivery firm that caused the breach in the oil tank, and he's noting that they are being placed on notice in terms of a claim for damages, and he lays out the case essentially, and is looking for a response. Similar, there's a letter also directed to the attorney representing Sprague Operating Resources LLC. They are the firm that essentially subcontracted with Atlantic to deliver the oil. This firm is actually the firm that supplied the heating oil, and it's a very similar letter that outlines the issues. Essentially, an initial letter resulted in a response from Sprague stating that it was not their responsibility. Counsel indicates that, in fact, the town's contract was with Sprague, and he is expecting that they will respond with essentially a willingness to discuss a settlement on this Under Board to Consider, the first item is establishing a process and next steps for appointment of a temporary town manager, in light of the town manager screening committee's vote to return that responsibility. vote to return that responsibility to the select board. So I know in light of the communication from Rob Peterson, it appeared that aside from seeking consulting services, they were also looking to have the board, select board, take the responsibility of hiring a temporary town manager. So I, in consultation with the chair, suggested that that be a topic of discussion at tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. My recommendation on this would be at this time is to send a letter, whether it's by email or however, to all department heads in the town of Wilmington, and ask for their input if they are interested in seeking the temporary position, and we move forward from that point. I mean, I would like to give all department heads an opportunity to apply for the position. And with Mr. Hall sending out one, a letter just stating that, I would also recommend that we make it a short, very, very short window of possibly by Friday of this week, they can respond. I would believe that they would, that all department heads, knowing what's going on, would be able to respond in a fast manner.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask a clarifying question. So would that be under the assumption that if that were to take place and where we did garner interest, that there would potentially be a vote at our next meeting?
If possible, yes. Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, I would, I know it's a tight timeframe. You want it to respond by Friday, but some may be on vacation, some may not have communication. I would suggest that it be by the next Friday, the 22nd.
Okay. No problem at all? I understand.
Just, I don't want to interrupt you, Mr. Carr, but I believe you'll have to set the agenda, want to be mindful of when the agenda is set, that's all. I would throw that in there for the, I have no problem with extending it, but
The 20th, which would be Wednesday?
That's, Mr. Chair, yeah.
And the agenda is set on the 23rd.
I was going to just suggest what Mr. Carr said, what if we made it the 20th? That way, if anybody's out this week, they'll be back and be able to submit, and then it could still make the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Make it for the 20th. Yes, Mr. West?
I do want to remind the board that we did formally ask the assistant town manager to send a letter of request, a letter of interest, and we did get a response back. And we got a response, we asked for a response, we got a response back, and then we totally ignored that response, and then we said, we don't know what the heck we're going to do, we're going to go this way, we're going to go that way, and we still, if nothing else, we owe the assistant town manager a response to the letter of intent that we asked for that she delivered. So whether it be if she's included in this pool, if you will, that we're adding, that we're creating, I don't know, but, you know, here it is, two months, you know, Mr. Hall gave his letter of intent two months ago, and I said, two months later, we're still at square one when it comes to this position. So, you know, humble opinion is that I think we should offer the job to the assistant town manager, at least go into negotiations. If we don't go in, if we don't have successful negotiations, which we may or may not, and then we pursue forward from there. I mean, she is the person that's the town manager when the town manager is not here. If Jeff took a week off, what, two weeks ago, and you felt capable that she was in charge in your absence. I don't understand why we're belaboring this. If we don't want the assistant town manager, just say, we don't want the assistant town manager, and we go forward. But if it's somebody that's in consideration, and we asked her for a letter, we asked her for her intent, she put herself out there, nobody else did. And again, nobody, we didn't ask of anybody else. No, but, you know, I just feel that there should be some treatment, at least to offer, you know, at least to come up with an interview, and if she doesn't, you know, for whatever reason, it doesn't work, the interview doesn't work out, then we offer it to other department heads. I just feel that if we say, well, gee, we're going to offer it to all department heads, and we have, I'll pick on, you know, I'll pick on our chief of police only because he's here, you know, I mean, you're now, you're now, if you were to become a department head, let me just put it, a department head was to now become the temporary town manager, that person's now the, kind of sort of the boss, if you will, of their boss. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but
Chair, I just, if I recall correctly, we did address this. We did ask her for the letter of interest, and she did send it promptly, but then through other discussions, we had discussed that if she was going to apply for the town manager job, that we should consider whether or not to put her in the temporary town manager, because we felt like that would deter candidates from coming in, thinking that she would automatically get it. So I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that is how we addressed her letter. My personal opinion is we absolutely, her letter has been submitted, she doesn't need to resubmit it. It will be brought into this pool with the other department heads across Wilmington, if there are any others. We should interview each and every one of them and make a decision. I don't think it's, again, my opinion, I don't think it's fair to offer to anybody without interviewing all of the department heads and seeing who's eligible.
Mr. Chair, and I also don't feel that a person coming in as the acting town manager should be a candidate for the permanent position as well, because that will obviously skew the people who are going to apply for the position. Because if this board is going to unanimously hire someone who's going to ultimately go for the permanent position, then why would I, in another community, want to even put myself out there when that's already a foregone conclusion? So I think the individual that comes to the position as an acting town manager should also come to the understanding that they're not a candidate for the permanent position.
I personally disagree with that wholeheartedly.
Well, you didn't last meeting, you agreed
I've changed mine, too. You know, we all have minds that we can change.
No, okay.
And I'm just saying that after thinking it all over, I don't feel it would be that much of a difference. I think the applicants would still be there in numbers, and I don't think we should deny someone to apply for a town manager's job because they're acting as a temporary town manager, which would be a position that more than likely they would be looked at to handle if the town manager was, for some unforeseen reason, not just retirement, but was leaving. You would put the town in limbo, I believe, in that it would be, anyone, I think everyone should have a right to apply. That doesn't mean that, you know, they're automatically targeted as the lead candidate for a position, but that everyone should have a right to apply, whether you're sitting in the position of temporary town manager or not. That's my opinion anyways.
I was just going to say, if we could just redirect back to what we're going to do for the temporary town manager, if that is something what people think we should do, should we just put it out there as
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah. We had a, yeah.
Oh, did we?
Go in turn.
I did it, yeah.
I apologize, that's right. Okay, there is a motion on the floor for going internally
Yep.
For a town manager, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Four to one.
So a communication will be sent out tomorrow to all the department heads indicating that they're, if they're interested in being considered for the temporary town manager position, to submit a communication by or before the next Wednesday.
The 20th, yes.
The next one, Board to Consider, a request of Select Board of the Town Manager Performance Evaluation Form to be sent to the Town Manager Screening Committee. So you recall that in the, my employment agreement, there is a performance evaluation document, and as I understand it, Select Board Member West is suggesting that be provided to the screening committee.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we take no action here. I think that if a particular selectman wants to provide a document, I don't think we need to take a vote. I have no, I don't want you to take this personally, Mr. West, but, you know, I think this is a reasonable request. I don't think it needs an action of the board here. In fact, if I remember correctly
I thought we already did.
I thought we did, too.
We talked about giving these documents over. The only thing I would add, since we're on the topic, you know, I would just assume that with the new town manager, perhaps a new evaluation tool would be developed.
I hope so.
So I don't, you know, they can have it, but
Mr. Chairman? We can cross that bridge when we come
Mr. Chairman?
But go ahead.
My rationale for asking for this evaluation for, delivering this to the committee is, again, it gives them another tool. This is, this is what we know today on how we're going to evaluate a town manager. It may or may not change in the future. I mean, if, if we're going to update this evaluation, we should be updating it now while we're in the process of creating, you know, getting a new town manager. We shouldn't just say, hold on a second, if I will, you know, you don't want to say, well, gee, you know, we're hiring a new town manager on such and such a date, and, oh, by the way, we're in process of reeval, of tweaking our evaluation form of you. Again, it's just, to me, it's just a tool to say, this is what the board, you know, the town manager's bosses look at our town manager for.
Mr. Chair, and I mean this in the nicest way, I'll just repeat. I think we said that was okay at the last meeting. I think this board was like, give them whatever documentation they want, I think the evaluation was
It doesn't need a vote, I think is all they're saying. Give it to them, we just don't.
Mr. Peterson does have a copy of this.
Okay, as long as, like I said, I just want to make sure that they have every tool that this town can provide them, all of the documents that Ms. Inman created, you know, in draft format, and others, you know, Mr. Hall, anyone, you know, I just want them to have everything so that it helps them make the appropriate, you know, recommendation back to us.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with Mr. West, so much so that if the committee comes to the chair or the town manager and needs a document, I'd be okay with them providing it. I don't think they need, and I can only speak for myself, but I don't think we need an act of this board, nor should they have to wait for an act of this board to get a document.
Okay, I'm happy with that. I just, like I said, I just want to make sure that they have everything they need and as much as we can, as much as they can get.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we take no action on this.
No action.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All in favor?
Yeah, okay. I have a second, who's seconded?
I did.
All those in favor? Five oh.
All right, next is a Board to Consider, the request of Brett Sawin, the Recreation Director, to conduct the 55th Annual Horables Parade on Sunday, October 29th.
Board to Grant the Request?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Approve.
Next is a request to consider executing the regulatory agreement with Regency Place Gardens LP, and this is property located on 111 to 121 West Street. This is a development that was established a number of years ago, initially through the state housing and community development. The, all of the units in there count towards the town's SHI. The agreement, the regulatory agreement basically allows Valerie Gingrich and her department to monitor the affordable units to make sure that they, we continue to retain those units. That agreement with DHCD expired, and this is essentially a new agreement that would allow her office to continue to monitor those units. The agreement was prepared by town council. It's my recommendation the board authorize the agreement.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Five oh.
Mr. Chairman, in the next Board to Consider, number 11, I would make a motion to pass over because the Wilmington Band Parents and the Wilmington Sons of Italy successfully had their yard sale this past weekend and do not need the rain date, so
Second. All those in favor?
Next is a Board to Consider, the request of Pat Giroux, Chair of the Fourth of July Committee, to use the town common on Saturday, September 30th as a rain date, October 7th for their Fall Fest. You'll recall, this request was made previously for use of the Swain Parking Lot and Green Space. Since then, there is interest in setting up a tent on the town common. I think there's going to be music and other activities there, and so this request is specific to the town common for the same event.
I move to grant the request.
Second.
All those in favor? So moved.
Next is a Board to Consider, Approval of License to Sell Christmas Trees for the Wilmington Methodist Church and for the Boys Scouts of America, Troop 56. I would ask that if the board considers authorizing this, they also would waive the fee.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
This next request is a request of Dana Burnham, Wilmington Tuxbury United Methodist Women's Group, to place lawn signs on the town common to publicize their harvest and Holly Fair Fest to be held on October 28th. The practice has been for sign, two signs to be posted on both the church street and the Middlesex side.
Move to Grant the Request?
Second.
Favor? So moved.
Let's see, the next request is Julie Sabachi Manos, Wilmington Sons and Daughters of Italy, to use the municipal parking lot, July 4th building for blood drive on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Move to Grant the Request?
Second.
Favor?
The next request is Janine Fitzpatrick, Wilmington High School, Boys Soccer Boosters to use the municipal parking lot on Middlesex Ave for fundraising car wash on Sunday, September 8th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, the rain date of the 15th. I would suggest that the board take this under advisement at this point. There's been some discussions about the ability to accommodate events, essentially from March of '24 forward, given the construction zone that will be created for the town school admin. I know George Hooper and representative from Consigli and others were taking a look at the site this morning. What I would suggest is that any further requests for events post-March of '24 be put on hold until we can get back to the board with an explanation of what is, what the site constraints there and what is possible. I know that this is certainly going to be an area that's going to be fenced off as a safety zone, there's going to be a need for staging and storage for steel deliveries and various other things, so that would be my recommendation.
Should we table this until we get that answer? We could also ask them to seek a different location, maybe the public buildings where the old fire station was, there might be a spot for car washes
That's true.
As an option.
Guy, today I went up to the high school parking lot, and from the way they're showing things, one, the lot's going to be a mess for quite a while. They will have it ready for school, but there's going to be a lot of excavation of the parking lot also. And George and I were speaking, and it was brought up, the old fire station, they can accommodate anything, and I would recommend that we seriously consider it, and from now until the, well, next year, until the parking lot is done and the construction is done, that we consider using the old that we consider using the, the old fire station for any type of car washes or anything else to happen.
Chair, we just kindly asked that we communicate, you know, whatever we decide with, with this group.
We will. But we can table it for now?
Either that, I mean, no one's seconded the table. I mean, we can, if you want to, to take a vote to approve the car wash on September 8th at the public buildings, since you've already talked to Mr. Hooper about that, but also, you know, with the approval of this, of the boys soccer, you know, they may say, no, we don't want to do it.
Yeah.
You know, but at least we're giving them the approval now to have that opportunity.
Yeah, I would, I, from this, from this point forward, I would just notify everyone that, you know, that it's going to be.
That's the location.
Because of the location, there'll be, you know, there will be a change in location. And George showed me what they would do, and I, I think it would be absolutely terrific, you know. I mean, we all, we're building a new town hall, we got school administration building, we're going to have to make sacrifices here and there. And just to shift it down the road a little ways, I don't see that as a problem. Would you prefer to table it, or would you?
I like what Kevin, I, I make a motion as Kevin just stated, to approve it at the new location with communication to them unless they don't want to have it there, obviously, but.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
That takes care of the board to consider.
Public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was hoping to do like two for one night, but I understood, I submitted my license the other day for common visual license. I'm going to reopen up the restaurant again. I saw Beverly, evidently didn't make the agenda, and I totally understand. But there's a, and I wanted to do two for one. I wanted to talk about the American Rescue Plan, and I think it's very important. And I just, just wanted to talk to this board and talk to the town manager and give a little insight on something, you know, and put, you know, personalities aside. You know, I'm here to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act. An act was passed by the federal government in March of 2021, which was to intend to help Massachusetts communities in response to COVID-19, the pandemic. As you know, the pandemic has affected the country, the state, and the town of Wilmington as a whole. We've all suffered through that, and I know that. And on March 10th, 2020, when Governor Baker did the statewide emergency, he implemented that you could not evict tenants. And some people seem to forget, not only that you could not evict residential tenants, also landlords who could not evict small businesses as identified as 150 employees or less. So my tenant took full advantage of that. He stopped paying the rent, the note, the property tax, the insurance, stopped paying everything. And he still stayed in business for four months before he claimed COVID put him out. I had to pay all that out of savings, you know, so, and then when I get the, it took me, and then when Charlie Baker lifted up that moratorium back on October 17th of 2020, the courts were backed up nine months. I didn't get my building back until June 18th of 2021. I've had to endure was like 19 months to try to get my building back legally because of the pandemic. I did my best to try to rent that out. I entered an agreement with another gentleman. Same thing, didn't pay his bills, went back and forth. I had to evict that gentleman out. So I thought I would take it upon myself to try to lease, try to rent the building on my own, and it was very difficult. And that's why I'm here to talk to you folks a little bit, both basically to the town manager, relative about this act. So I did my best to try to get tenants, and I couldn't find anybody. So what I did was I placed a phone call to Mike Shampoo, and I said, you're the chairman of the Economic Development. I mean, not, no one has ever said, geez, Mr. McCoy, I'm going into the fourth year now, that building being vacant. That's why I'm going to come back. I was going into the third year being vacant. And I said, Mike, not, no one ever said, hey, Mr. McCoy, can we help you? Boy, your building's vacant. I said, no one's ever tried to even reach out to me, but can you give me some help? I appreciate it. And he said, I'm going to talk to Valerie Guirnson Jane, she's on the economic, and we'll see if we can have, if somebody calls the town hall, we'll direct them to you. And I believe Valerie and I believe Jane absolutely did that. So in the meantime, I hired a professional restaurant broker for nine months to try to get somebody. That phone, I never got a phone call from Valerie or anybody, and it only reinstated what the restaurant broker said. Michael, not too many people run into open restaurants these days. Now, I wasn't expected to come back to open my restaurant, to be totally honest, but I made that executive decision. At least I can trust myself. I know what I, how to open up a restaurant, and I know I'm knocking out of the park. And I'm going to be giving out 15 to 20 jobs in doing this, you know, because at least I know I can trust myself and trust my family. So some people don't really understand when they talk about the effects of COVID and what has happened. Small businesses and a lot of folks, and it did hurt a lot of folks, but a lot of folks took full advantage of that to try to get out of agreements and everything, and it was, and the courts were shut down. They were shut down. They had to do meetings in Zoom to go through the process. It took me from Charlie Baker's moratorium until the following year, June 18th of 2021, to get my building back. And I paid all the bills. I even called the town assessor, said, listen, my building's shut down because of COVID. Is there any breaks relative to taxes? And she says, no, you have to pay full rate. So those are other things. Thank God I was pretty successful owning Michael's place, because with all due respect, if I didn't pay the property tax, I'd lose the building to the town, rightfully so, because, you know, you got to pay your taxes. And I just want to let folks know, since Charlie Baker's moratorium, forget about me opening in 1984, since Charlie Baker's moratorium through October 1st, I've given the town of Wilmington of this year $61,815.65 property tax alone out of savings. I've given now, because the building's unoccupied, you have to pay double the rate to the insurance companies. People don't seem to understand that. So now I had to pay double what it would be to actually open up to insurance companies. I've given the insurance companies $35,285. I know come January, the next tax bill, I've had to spend over $100,000, and those are hard numbers, out of savings, to keep that building afloat, because I had that since 1983. Had to go to town meeting, get a zoning. I had to do everything, and it took me two years to get the permits. And so I read in the Apple, say around mid-July, that there was this grant money. I didn't realize this grant money was available May 1st, so I put it in Warp Speed. I did go to the Economic Development Committee, basically saying to you what I'm saying to them. What I said to them, what's happened? I've decided just to reopen the restaurant, and I decided to try to apply for that grant. I put together a great package. I did everything I needed to do in order to get that grant. And a member of the Economic Development Committee said, she went out and tried to solicit businesses because it was identified as businesses on Lowell Street and Main Street. This is the federal, it's basically our tax dollars, but it's the federal government giving money assistance to these communities to try to help businesses that have struggled during COVID. So one of the members, because evidently it shows that not a lot of people applied for this, they've known about it since May 1st, and I didn't see this until like mid-July in, in, from the Apple. I was reading it. I said, oh my God, there's money available. I didn't even knew that. So I filled out the application. I did everything that I had to do. And I have to, you know, tell you, I put it in, all right? And then I did get the town manager a call, and I said, is there anything that I didn't do? Because I put the application, I did everything I was supposed to do, and the town manager said to me, well, basically, you're not in business, and you're not going to qualify for this grant. I said, because the coronavirus put me out of business. That's what has affected me. When I say I want to do something, I do it. That's how I do it, all right? I am going to reopen that restaurant. I'm not going to be able to open up, I know there's another, and I, from what I understand, there was $150,000 still left in that budget. That goes to show you that not a lot of people applied, so there's extra money out there. And I'm just asking the town manager if he would consider, please consider, and I'll go talk about dollars and cents, that you expand the scope, because you're the one, and I believe with Valerie Guirnson, your department heads or whoever, put the language together from the federal government with the money in order to give that. That restaurant has been closed, and I haven't made a penny on that thing of income coming in since Charlie Baker's moratorium. Okay, and I'm hoping that you, Mr. Manager, and it's up to you, that you open up that scope. And that's why I've decided to, I'm going to open up the restaurant again. And I was hoping to get the common vic, but I understand it was at the last minute, and I respect that, not a problem. So I'm going to be here next, softens meetings, September 25th, to go for common visual license to show good faith. I understand how the system works sometimes, but see, where I'm not open, like La Russa's and the restaurants that haven't opened, they'll apply, and it's subject to the border health of the plant, or the building inspector, you know, to sign off. And when that happens, you can pick up your license. So and sometimes people get the work done ahead of time to do what they can, then they apply. I'm trying to show good faith, and I've always said, and when I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it. I'm going to reopen that restaurant, you know, and I've heard people for years that, wouldn't it be really nice? I saw you took the signs down, it's like a month and a half ago, and you get a tenant. Yeah, me, I'm coming back, and that's exactly what I need to do. So I just wanted to touch base to tell this board, and especially to the town manager, Jeff, I really wish you'd give some consideration of opening that scope to allow a vacant building that is on Lowell Street, which is Michael's place restaurant, who that's me, to actually give 15 to 20 full-time jobs to folks. That's what I'm going to do. And I really hope, because you know something, the grants for $25,000, I'm going to spend a lot more than $25,000 to get that restaurant going, because I have to do a lot, you know, I have to, you know, buy certain things. But the problem I have right now, okay, because of COVID, still, still, there's two things. It's supplies and also shipping shortages. There is some stuff you can't even buy. It's like six months behind to buy certain types of equipment that is made in this country. So I've put in some audits to try to get some equipment to do this, to do that, and I'm not going to be open in October. There is, because I know you said there's going to be a second round coming up in October. By that language, I met the whole criteria of that application with that one exception, not being open to the public. I plan on being open to the public, and I'm just showing the, you folks, you, Mr. Manager, and hopefully you will look at that. You know, the government has to take a look at this. You're going to have a building that's been vacant on Lowell Street since my, since June of 2020. I've been footing the bill on that whole thing. Right now, I have no choice but to come back, and I'm looking forward to it. I really am. I'm looking forward to doing that. I'll do my best, and I know I'll do a good job at it. So that's the reason why I decided to come here tonight to hopefully get that message across, and if you would give it some thought, Mr. Manager, because that would be a great economic boost for me, $25,000, all right? And you don't have to, you know, because I know in the application, it was like for restaurants, it would be signage. And I'll say this about the sign, I said, economic development. Yeah, I used to ride motorcycles. If you, I had a beautiful sign. I wouldn't even be here to talk about this. I had a beautiful sign. What did my tenant do? Took the sign down, he put a sign. I got nothing against Holly Davidson. It's a red, white, and blue, it's stars in it. It looks like a Holly Davidson sign that's for, like a dealership. That's exactly what it looks like. And I used to ride bikes for years, and I did, I'm not trying to play hot and flowers, but I used to drive it until my brother Junior killed, and then I said, that's it for me. All right, so I did ride motorcycles, and I understand, and I love Holly Davidson, but that's, that's not an appropriate sign. And then my landscape has always been beautiful. I don't have to spend any money on the landscape. So there was money available for restaurants to do signage, to do some awnings and say landscape. I don't need to do landscape. I'm kind of a proud person. If you go there, it looks better than some places, and it's been vacant for four years. So that's why I decided to come to this board, with personalities aside. I'm a taxpayer, and I've been a longtime resident of this community, and I'm talking about the politics. And I, for my 31 years, I've donated tens of thousands of dollars to all organizations, senior citizens, ball teams, softball, basketball, whoever they would come, I would do my best, even churches that I don't even attend to. I did everybody because it's good business sense. Myself, Matty and Chuckie DePisquale, at that time, we gave out a lot of stuff to everybody. We did things, and I got along with those guys. And I know today you've got places like Tremesas and AJ's, and they're doing what they can do. You know, it's tough times out there, but I'm going to get back to doing it, you know. So I'm just here, Jeff, I just hope you give it some thought, because it sounds like to me there's still a lot of money left in that budget. And I just think if you open up the scope a little bit, because you folks write through the language, and the federal government is supplying the money, and it would be really nice to get that little boost. That's why I came, give it some thought, and I'm happy to just be here. And like I said, you know, I had no skin in the game talking about that, that aside, my only goal is this. So I'm going to be here next week, folks, looking for common visual license, and I will ask for a legal license as time goes on. But it is six months away from equipment. It's just, it's a different world today. It's a different world.
Mr. Chairman, if there's going to be any discussion on this, I'd request to abstain from the discussion because my company, my business, we did put in for that grant, so I just want to be clear that if there's any discussion.
I'm not looking for any discussion. I just wanted to get that message across. You, folks, do whatever you want, if that's the case. I just like pleading to, just talking to the town manager. But I think people really need to know that, that the significance and ramifications of this coronavirus. It was just not residential, small businesses, and a lot of folks took full advantage of that, using coronavirus as a excuse to get out of obligations, and it's really sad. It's happened, not only to me, to a lot of folks. And I could say a lot more about other things, you know, about other people that I know. So I've done my best, folks, to try to get a tenant.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I know, just, just, all right, thank you.
New business? Oh, I apologize, sir.
Well, that's okay. Dan Murphy, 102 Middlesex Ave. I, I was the one that sent you the, the note just before the selection committee's meeting, first meeting. I just wanted to come here and elaborate very briefly, sorry to extend the meeting, but elaborate very briefly, kind of my point of view and my concerns about the composition of that selection committee. Certainly, the diversity of it is kind of the content of my letter. The fact that there isn't any, I think is problematic. That it doesn't represent the town is problematic. That I think diversity at its very core, this is not an issue of wokeness or anything of that matter. It's about getting the best result, and I think the more diverse a committee, the better the result, right? You have a number of different perspectives that aren't represented on that committee. And I think that's more than unfortunate. I think it's something that ought to be rectified. The, it was mentioned earlier regarding the decision to maybe hire a consulting firm and how that reflects on the town, and also the signals that it, it sends out to potential candidates. I think likewise, the diversity of that selection committee is going to send the wrong signal, right? In terms of who will likely apply for this position, right? And so I think a number of candidates might decide not to, right? Based on what that committee looks like, right? And so I think one of the things that ought to be considered is whether or not, you know, you can kind of go through this process again. I think there's obviously some problems in terms of the experience of this board in hiring a town manager, and that's not, that's not a knock, that's just, that's evident, right? I think there's some of those same problems on, on the selection committee. And yet, I think there are a number of different perspectives that need to be listened to and responded to. They won't have that opportunity. I think one of the important points to make is that for those who are new to the process, is that the first part of a selection will inevitably be in executive session, right? And so when you're going through these candidates, that first selection, who gets sent to the actual board? And who is not, right? That's, that's not going to be made public, and that's, that's why there's an issue with, with, with the board composition as it is. So I, I want to obviously give you the opportunity to respond to the letter if, if you have a response, but certainly would hope that something is done to kind of rectify what I think is an unfortunate situation. Thank you.
I'll respond, at least offer a response.
By the way, I, I do, I do want to thank board member Vendell for responding as well to my email. Thank you.
You know, one of the things I'll respond to you on that is that, you know, we, it was said at a public meeting that, you know, by Chair Peterson, we're nine white guys, okay? Now, that's, in one respect, that could be a composition of the board. What we have in that board is we have a former town manager, we have two practicing attorneys, we've got several former selectmen that are aware of the process, we've got department heads. So I mean, it's, it's unfortunate in one respect that the composition is, you know, again, to use Jim and Peterson's word, nine white guys, if that's what you're thinking about the composition. But within that composition, we've got some older folks, we've got young folks with kids in the system, in the school system. We have people with grandkids in the school system. We have kids, people that are in process. we have kids, people that are in process of, you know, they're, they're look, they're the future of Wilmington in some respects, in that they've got young ones. So, I think instead of, in my eyes, instead of looking at, you know, one dynamic, if you will, I think we've done a good job. I mean, we, you gotta remember is, is that we looked at four people from the, from the town that we wanted, being the department heads, finance department heads of both school and, and, uh, and town. They happened to be male. We asked for a, the, uh, finance committee and the, uh, planning board committee membership, again, male. We each independently took a charge of, of recruiting one person. We didn't go up to, you know, everyone to say, well, gee, I'm thinking of picking this, I'm thinking of picking, you know, this one. You know, we did that independently. I, as far as I know, we didn't have, you know, grandiose discussions, you know, so I think, you know, the, the, the composition of the board, humble opinion, is, is that I think that we've got a, a wealth of experience. I think we've all complimented the entire composition of the board and looked at them for what they are, is that you've got, you know, probably hundreds of years combined of, of good breadth of, depth and breadth of experience, and I, and like I said, I think they all bring something valuable to the table. And as far as, uh, the executive session and all this other stuff, you know, the town, the people are welcome in open session to sit down, express their opinions, you know, like you've expressed, you know, in a letter form, there's a meeting Thursday night, attend the meeting Thursday night and say, look, you know, I'm also a person in town that has a, has a, uh, an opinion or whatever that you wanna present. So, I, you know, I, I think that, you know, we're, we're too far along in the process that we could, we should just scrap the board and start, or scrap the committee and start over, but I think we should be thankful that these, these folks have volunteered to step up for, you know, what can be many, many nights and, and, and weekends of deliberations. So, that's, that's just my take.
If I can just respond to that.
Sure.
Firstly, I don't think you're that far along in the process. Um, I, I don't think to date you've, uh, actually drafted, um, you know, the certain, uh, uh, you know, job postings, that sort of thing. Um, I, I would say the problem lies not in the capacity of those you chose. I'm not, I'm not denying their experience, their abilities, this sort of thing. What's problematic is, we have on this board largely male, largely white, right, board members, and what did that produce? That produced a nine-member committee of all men who are completely white, okay? That's, that's how, that's how these things work. So, what I, what I, what I'm saying, uh, it's not, it's not that, um, uh, you know, I'm imputing your integrity in any way. What I'm saying is that you had a composition, and then you got another composition that looked very much like it. When you bring together different perspectives, you'll see that you're pulling from different corners of not just this town, but the community at large, of the state, potential people, including women, by the way, um, who would be very capable in this position. And so, that's why I think you should reconsider, um, the, the composition of this board as it stands. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna add my comments. Um, as Mr. West said, you know, we all independently pick, but don't know one each other, and I will say that, uh, when I did see the list, I even said to the chair, I said, you know, no women on the list, but I'm gonna speak honestly, and, uh, it's probably not gonna be popular with anybody, if anybody's listening, but I'm just gonna speak honestly. When we, we did not consider, um, you know, any type of demographics when we were putting this committee together. We were just talking about who we're gonna get, you know, who we're gonna propose and all that stuff, male, female, white, black, Asian, no demographics whatsoever came into it, um, right or wrong, but I'm just being honest with you. Um, yep, it did come out with nine white male. I did notice that, but it's who we ended up choosing. Now, on the other side of it, just to play devil's advocate, um, going to this board, in all honesty, where, you know, made up of, of white individuals, four men, one woman, we didn't have anybody else running, so it's not like we even had, no one's volunteered for any other. I, I'm just making the point of that, because you called it out. You called it out.
You missed the point.
No, I didn't miss the point. You're missing the point. You are, you're missing the point. And what I'm saying is, had we sat here and said, we're having a board of nine, we should have, and I'm just making this up, you know, it should be, have at least two women, it should have two, you know, minorities, whatever, I'm just, you know, women minorities too, but if we had said that, now we're, now we're profiling, and now we're not picking the best people. So, it's, it's, it's a very sticky situation, and I have to say, the way this came together, in my opinion, it was an organic thing as far as who we picked, we didn't know, it was not with any ill intent. I would have loved to have seen, you know, a woman or any other, uh, you know, demographic on the board, it just didn't happen that way, you know? And, and, you know, to go further, you know, I, I'm gonna stop there. Alls I'm saying is, I am not gonna vote to change this board, because they're in it, they started it, it's unfair to the people we've chosen, um, you know, if, if there were, I just don't think it's, it's right at this point. I totally understand, and like I said, it was, and Mr. DePalma can confirm that, I said that to him as soon as I saw the list. So, I get it, but...
Could I just make two quick points? Uh, the first is that, you know, like all of you, I learned, uh, when I saw the agenda come out, who was on the committee, I had no idea.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, and certainly wouldn't, wouldn't expect anyone to, uh, to unveil this, but perhaps someone here did ask, a, a young lady from town, or a woman from town.
Good point, good point.
And then that person said, I don't know. You know, we don't wanna insult anybody who's on the committee, thinking that they were their second choice.
Yep.
I don't know what your process was.
That's true.
In choosing your candidate. Maybe it was your first choice, maybe it wasn't. Uh, and the other thing I would mention is that, um, uh, with all due respect to the gentleman, I've received, I've received a lot of positive feedback.
Oh, I have too.
About this committee, uh, if you recall, a few months ago now, I guess it was, when Attorney Fair was kind of coaching us up on this process, he said to us on a number of occasions, you wanna be very careful about who you choose.
Mm-hmm.
It's not just, um, just anybody, it's maybe somebody who has experience in this process, and I think we kind of checked all those boxes with people from a vast, uh, vast experience throughout this town, throughout the years. Um, and so, I think we, we took that advice very serious from our attorney, and again, I just wanna add that we have received quite a bit, you know, I can only speak myself, received quite a bit of positive feedback of the makeup of this group.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment as well? This, this isn't meant to get into a back and forth.
No.
Or an argument or anything, but, uh, what's problematic was your comment in implying that, under executive session, these individuals who are very talented and knowledgeable would take applications and set them aside.
Right.
Because they don't, uh, look like themselves. And, and I think that's offensive, and I don't need to defend them, but your comment by saying, when they get into executive session, they're going to take those applications and set those ones aside, is offensive. And, and I don't, I don't think that any one of those individuals would ever do that, as, as far as I know, because I, I know those individuals, and they're, they're good, decent, honorable people, and I don't think that, you know, that would happen at all.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say, uh...
I'll give you just another minute or so, sir.
Just one last thing, that you misunderstand the history of the United States if you make that comment. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else who comments? Go ahead.
Good evening. Um, Kevin McDonald, one forty-nine.
Did you stand at the mic, sir? I'm sorry.
I don't see any, um, cord from it. Is it working?
Yes, it is.
Wireless, hardly know.
Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I sat in at the, um, meeting with the town manager's select committee, and, um, one of the things that I heard said, I'm not gonna name any names, but you could watch the video of the meeting, was a comment from one of the persons, and I, I'll, I'll give the person respect for, for being honest, and if I can quote verbatim, he basically said, "I don't want my ignorance to be to the detriment of the town." And as I listened to the people on that committee, none of them seemed to really have experience at choosing a town manager, and...
No one in town does, sir. No one does.
I'm not looking to argue with you. The, the one thing that I did like that the committee did decide was that it was very important to pick a consultant. One of the things that I mentioned at the meeting that I would like to see happen is a simple public record request to other towns who have hired consultants and paid probably fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to that consultant to do an extreme amount of work and present it as a public record to a municipality, which we have the right to get as a public record, so that you folks can take a look at it, read through it, see what the suggestions are, see what the qualifications are, maybe even have some names that are mentioned that they didn't hire, that are top-quality candidates at zero cost, with, with the exception of the printing of the public record document. So, I don't know if you'd be willing to do that, but that would be my suggestion to you. That was what my suggestion was to that committee, and I thought it was a good suggestion.
Thank you.
The, the one other thing that I thought would be a good idea, since there's contention in the town about what the committee looks like, I really don't care what the committee looks like. I wouldn't care if they were all black, Hispanic, or whatever. I, I don't have a problem with what somebody looks like. I basically have a problem with some folks that aren't really up to speed on what they're doing, and what I would suggest that this board do, even if you had to put a reverse nine-one-one call up the po, folks, and ask people in town, do you have experience and would you be willing to offer your time if you have experience in the human resources, um, end of business, so that we can, um, get some other people added to the committee who actually know what they're doing?
Let me explain something to you. We went to nine on this, on the subcommittee. Once you start going over the nine, you water everything down, because there is way too many comments. If someone wants, opinions, if someone wants to address the, uh, search of, for a new town manager, Thursday night, they're meeting again at seven, in, I believe, room nine, is it here? They're gonna be here. Voice your opinion to them, and let them see what they wanna do. Uh, I'm not, I, I, I for one am not gonna mandate to the subcommittee anything. They're, they're gonna run their, their committee properly, within the guidelines, and they're gonna produce for us, but I'm not gonna step in, like, I don't believe any, any member of this board is gonna step in at all, and, I mean, if we see it wrong, you're gonna present it, but we're not gonna step in and say, no, I don't want it done this way, I want it done that way.
I wasn't suggesting that.
And...
I was just suggesting...
The issue is, is any of these now, since the committee is formed, any of these questions should be addressed to, to the committee itself, sir.
Okay, I was just simply making the suggestion that it would be nice to see a couple human resources professionals on there, since I'm not a human resource professional, and I don't think anybody on that committee is, but I really didn't really come to here to talk about this specifically. I came to talk about the Sharapafarm, because as you know, the town was in executive session, and I know you can't discuss it, but I would appreciate if you just heard my thoughts on it. Um, as you know, um, when the town decided to take the property by eminent domain, um, they still had the opportunity to bring in a 40B plan, and at the town meeting, I suggested that this is potentially very detrimental to the town, and it could cost the town like thirty million dollars. I know that you don't, you're, you're not planning on paying that, but the way it works with eminent domain is that the people have the right to actually sue the town for damages and to get the actual value of the property, which, in my estimation, is probably gonna be what the value of the property would be under a 40B plan. So, in my estimation, based on the other properties that I saw, where the Hayden Printing Building was, and where Procopio's Building, um, the building by Lucchese, um, what those properties sold for, which was a fraction of the size of the Sharapafarm property, I think you're looking at an extreme amount of money. So, the question that I would like you to all think about is, if it does come to this, if the town does get sued, and they, they're out, they're facing with a thirty million dollar, um, uh, legal settlement, what's that gonna do to the taxpayers? Um, see, we've got a, we've got, just let me finish my thought.
One second, one, one second. You're bringing up suing, suing, suing. You don't think that we've sat down with our legal counsels, the towns' councils, and said, what is the disadvantage? What is the possibility of every? We've gone through all that already, and we've, we've made a decision to present it, which we did, and move forward, uh, with the, uh, attempted, attempted purchase of the property through eminent domain. Now, as far as lawsuits are concerned, who knows? I don't know. Do you know if you're gonna be sued next month? Do you know if you're gonna be sued next month? You don't know, Mr. Chairman. So, let's, let's not, we're drawing, we're going out too far on this right now, sir.
I understand, but I wanted to just make a point for the rest of the town to understand, you're gonna build a senior center, you're gonna build a town hall, you wanna build a hundred million dollar early education center, when this building's gonna be vacated. Now, the two past chairmen did not want to do anything with this building that would save the town money, because in their estimation, it would cost too much to convert it to a school, when it was already a school. Now, keep in mind, when the high school was built, it was eighty-five million dollars roughly, and it was, it was sized to educate nine hundred and sixty's...
I'm not gonna get into all this right now with you. I appreciate it.
Uh, this is like huge, this is...
Mr. McDonald, we've heard enough of this now.
A hundred million dollars for a hundred and seventy kids versus eighty-five million for nine hundred and sixty kids?
Thank you.
There's something wrong with the, with the mathematics in this. You're, you're telling people, when the, when the town, uh, high school got built, your taxes were only gonna go up, the cost of a cup of coffee, a coffee, and they doubled. So, what's gonna happen with all of this?
This is enough of this now, it's, this, until we know the figures, I wanna appreciate.
I'm gonna tell you exactly why it's enough.
Thank you very much for being here.
Because you don't wanna be responsible. These are tough things to deal with.
We, we know that, and thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Uh, it doesn't seem like you appreciate it.
We're gonna move on now. Important dates.
Announcements.
Oh, announcements, excuse me. Any announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind folks, uh, there's a very special event this coming Friday, was omitted from the, uh, important dates, but, uh, there's a celebration of Tina Stewart's nearly fifty years of service to the town, uh, at the library this Friday from four to six P.M., and I encourage residents to join us, celebrating her long and wonderful career.
Thank you. Any other announcements? New business? Now we go to important dates.
Sundays through October first, the farmer's market, Town Common Parking Lot, ten A.M. to one P.M. Uh, September fourteenth is the town manager's screening committee, Town Hall, Room Nine, seven P.M. Uh, September sixteenth, shredding day, Municipal Parking Lot, nine A.M. to noon. September twentieth, the senior center building committee, Town Hall, Room Nine, six P.M. September twenty-fifth, Wilmington Incorporated, two hundred and ninety-three years ago. Also on September twenty-fifth is a select board meeting, Room Nine, seven P.M. September twenty-sixth, Senator Barry Feingold will be at the Town Hall, uh, actually the Bazzal Senior Center, six P.M. to seven P.M. Uh, September thirty, the Fall Fest, Town Common, ten A.M. to four P.M., with the rain date of ten seven. Uh, October second is the candlelight vigil, Town Common, six thirty P.M. to eight P.M. Uh, October fourth is a town school admin building committee, Town Hall, Room Nine, six P.M. October nine is Columbus Day, town offices are closed. October tenth is a select board meeting, meeting, uh, Room Nine, seven P.M., and then again on October twenty-third, select board meeting, Room Nine, seven P.M. November first is a town school admin building committee meeting, six P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Now, turn the mic over to Greg Bendel for salute to service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and on behalf of the board, we recognize that today is a very solemn day in our nation and across the world, so tonight, uh, we are remembering thousands of victims who lost their life on nine eleven, the hundreds of brave heroes that sacrificed their lives, um, trying to save them on that day, and, and countless more who lost their lives in defensive...
more who lost their lives in defense of our country since that tragic day, and, uh, we join the rest of the nation in never forgetting, and tonight, we remember them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pendle. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night. Good night.